Minutes of this meeting are being recorded, therefore anyone wishing to conduct business will be asked to come to the microphone, provide their name and address, present their requests or concerns, and answer any questions of the planning commission. Groups are requested to select spokespersons to express the group's concerns because each side will be allowed ten minutes to speak. Plats rezoning, revised master plans, and street renames require a public hearing, after which the planning commission will deliberate and render its decision. The passage of any motion shall require the affirmative vote of a simple majority of the members of the commission who are present and eligible to vote. In the case of a tie in votes on any proposal, the proposal fails. Recusals and abstentions are not counted as a vote. Development plans require a public hearing to provide the public an opportunity to express opinions, however, a vote by the planning commission shall not be taken. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. If any motion to deny a request is made, a reason must be given. The members of the planning commission are Garrett Smith, Kayla Dixon, Tim Head, Cruz Reeves, James Reeves, Kenneth White, and myself, Leslie Stone. The staff members present are Warren Adams, Tanya Ingram, and Carol A. Penstone from the legal department.
Ms. Stone, I'm sorry, that's Andrea Hatchcock.
Andrea.
Sorry, I didn't change it.
Hi Andrea, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the September twenty-fifth meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Are there any changes to these references?
No.
Okay, item number one. We have a street renaming represented and presented by Brian Harden, representing Alpha. It's a request, a request, a recommendation to rename Capital Commerce Boulevard to Alpha Drive.
Thank you, Ms. Stone, and members of the commission. I am not Brian Harden, I am Russ Durrance here, representing Alpha and the Alabama Farmers' Federation. As many of you know, we are here requesting the approval to rename Capital Commerce Boulevard to Alpha Drive. Alpha is currently in the process of relocating its headquarters to the old Capital Commerce Building located on Capital Commerce Boulevard, and we would certainly like to rename the street to Alpha Drive to adequately reflect the new tenant there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the planning commission?
Did anybody, did anybody object to the renaming?
No, sir. We sent out formal notice and have not heard of any objections.
Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you. It's a rezoning presented by Charles and Pam Matthews, represented by Mr. and Mrs. Matthews. It's a request, recommendation for approval to rezone property containing six point eighty acres located at the south side of Selma Highway approximately twenty-eight hundred feet west of Felder Road from residential agricultural zoning district to M-one district.
Hey, Ms. Stone and board members, I'm Larry Weatherly with Remax Cornerstone Realty. I'm not Charles Matthews, but I'm here with him, and we're here to answer any questions y'all might have and address the objection that we found out about last month about the rezoning of this property.
Did you get a chance to, did you get a chance to meet with conservation?
Charlie did, yes.
What was the result?
So, when they talked to, when he talked to Seth Maddox last, I guess last week, Mr. Maddox wasn't aware that the property to the east of his, not just ours, has already been rezoned to commercial acreage, and he informed Charlie that if we could present that to him in writing showing that it's been rezoned, that they would drop their objection. So, I sent everything over to them this week. Unfortunately, he is out of town. I think he's on vacation this week, so we can't get anything from him on that. But we went back and looked, and we shared just a small corner, like if you look on the map, our little red spot, one of the objections that he had was that it would interfere with hunters, so on and so forth, because it's going to be rezoned to basically just a gravel parking pad to go commercial. That's what the buyers wanted to do with it. And we share such a small corner that we're hundreds of feet away, I mean probably thousands of feet away from any, like, any usable hunting acreage over there unless they're trying to dove hunt or something along those lines in the field, because it's mostly pasture. And looking at that, the property that's directly east of it, that shares a border that's over one mile long, that's already been rezoned to commercial acreage over there. So, basically, we would just be more or less forming into just the flow of what the properties over there are doing. Everything west of the airport is already being rezoned except ours and another small parcel. So, I think that about, oh, there's another objection about there's water runoff, but if you look on that map right there, we don't have any water, any major water drainage on the property, but the adjoining property has fourteen and a half acres of ponds and wetland on it, so we're not quite sure where the objection for the water runoff came from. And what we would do on ours, we share about four hundred and thirty feet of a southern border with the Prairie Glades Opportunities Zone over there, that, that would really be impacted, or at least it would be close to what we would be, or the buyers would be doing, but Prairie Glades has already put in a parking pad over there and a small barn that you can see on that map, you can see the barn area where they park for hunters and everything. So, basically, the only thing that would affect would just be, these people would see the parking pad and the gravel from where they park to go do whatever they do over there. It's a pretty large barn where they store equipment, so on and so forth. I think that's about. On that, any questions as far as that goes?
Board, my understanding is it wasn't the immediately adjacent property that was recently rezoned, it was one property over to the east. Can we show the zoning map, please?
Mom, can you put the zoning map up? There you go.
There you go. You can see the subject property striped, and you can see the property that was recently rezoned in pink to the east, so it's not immediately abutting it.
The, the property directly between the one in the pink and Ag One, the Prairie Glades, I checked, I pulled the, the tax records on that, and it is now also commercial acreage. And I called the zoning, I'm sorry, the, yeah, the zoning committee on that, or the zoning board to see when it was rezoned, but they don't even show it in the computer anymore. But I was actually the agent who sold that property about two years ago, a year and a half ago, and it originally was Ag One, so I don't know why now it is not under Montgomery City. I think it might be counted now, I just found this out. But for some reason, it's, it's not under, under the zoning guidelines anymore. I don't know why, but it is commercial acreage, too.
Which parcel are you talking about?
If you, if you see where it's Ag One, where the striped property is, the, the property directly between where it says Ag One and M-one in pink, that is owned by Warehouse Services.
Warehouse Services.
Yes, sir, and that's already been, that's commercial acreage over there.
That's an M-one zoning currently?
It's, it is, when I pulled the tax records on it, it's commercial acreage, yes, and I can send that to anybody that might need to see that. But, so we're just a small portion of acreage over there that's not everything else. So, the one that's directly east of it and directly east of us is all Warehouse Services, and that's commercial acreage.
And you're saying it came before the planning commission to be zoned?
I have, I honestly, Mr. Reeves, I don't know when that came to form, because I don't know that it is rezoned, though.
If it's rezoned, there should be an ordinance rezoning it, and that's obviously something we would have to check, because that's suggesting the zoning map is incorrect.
Yeah, that's what I was about to point out.
Now, sometimes the county tax office assesses property based on the actual use. They may have assessed it as commercial, but it's not actually commercial unless we can find an ordinance on it.
Okay, I can, I can pull what I found and send it to anybody that might need to see that.
Are you looking at the tax?
I pulled it out of, out of the Montgomery, the system where I pull like all the tax records and everything, and that's where I found where it's zoned, commercial acreage.
So, that's what you were talking about? It could be taxed as a commercial.
It may be assessed as a commercial use, but it's not zoned that way.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you all again for giving me the opportunity to come up here one more time. If you notice on that, work preparation does a lot for getting your case understood, and I've done a lot more preparation. The land that I have, that you see in the marks going across there, there's an entrance road that goes in to the Wildlife Federation, and when you enter that, it's, half of that property of mine is a parking lot. It's gravel, and it's probably fifty feet deep, and it's cut rock, fifty feet deep behind my property, and it goes to a little, not a little, but a very large metal building that you see in the top right-hand corner of their property, and that's their entertainment center and a parking for equipment and other things that they have. That's for, for when they hunt or whatever they do on that property, they do that there. It was also brought up about my water problem. I don't have a water problem. I bush hogged the whole place over the years many times. The water is on the Warehouse Services property that they purchased, that's down below there, and that is done by Lloyd Taylor Jr., which owned both pieces of that land in the past and my land, and he had catfish ponds there. And across the street is where, across the road, across that is where I lived, Spears Catfish Fonds, where I bought it, and I'll pay for the rest of my life for it, but that's where, that's where I live. And the, also on here, the parking area that they have, it goes all the way across the front of their property, and it's probably close to, I'd say forty yards at least that they have for gravel. So, my property is on the top side, between eighty, so my effects between on that land that goes a mile back would be hardly able to tell. That's about all I have to add, and thank you for your time.
I don't know if you know or not, but with the tractor trailers, the tractor trailer parking, will that be inside or outside?
I apologize, but I don't.
Tell him, tell him.
It's Charlie.
He'll tell you, he'll, he'll tell you what I said.
Mr. Reeves, you're asking if the tractor trailer parking, will it be covered parking or will it be just open parking?
Yes, yes, that's what.
It's, it's going to be open parking. They're just, they're going to put just a gravel pad back there for, for parking.
And will the trucks, is this the type where the trucks will be running all night?
I think from talking to them, it's just going to mainly be where they'll drop trailers and pick trailers up. They're not going to be storing them and running them constantly. And that's, I would have to verify that, but that's, I think, what their intended use is.
Did the people from the conservation department, did they leave anyone to, to address any questions that we might have, representative or anything, or the guy just left?
They did not. I called to see if there was anybody available, and both, and he is not available, there's nobody I can get in touch with, with him, he's gone.
I did talk to Seth Maddox. I talked to Seth Maddox, I had met him in the years past, and I did talk to him about this, and did he know about Warehouse Services, that they purchased that property for, I don't know, me and a half dollars, and they have addressed it among themselves, and they knew this area was going commercial, and one of the thoughts he had, they already knew is if the area goes commercial, that their property that they made investment in will be worth much, much more than what they paid for because of Warehouse Services buying the property next to it. So, they have already talked about going commercial on their property and relocating, and they would be able to multiply their investment much, much higher for commercial land if they get rid of it, which they said if Warehouse Services comes there, which I've been a supplier for them for thirty years, and I know their tendencies are absolutely to move on that land, that's why they spent that money to move out of Crapple and move Highway eighty.
Yes.
Hey, Tonya. Hey, would this require a development plan, should it get rezoned?
Yes.
Okay. So, the detention, the runoff can be handled in the development plan process?
Yeah.
Can I, can I also just point out that if you do rezone this, one of the allowed uses is any use permitted in a B-two district, and uses in a B-two zoning district by right include automobile filling stations, drive-in eating places, motels, automobile repairs. So, if you do rezone this, you may wish to consider cuing it, because that automatically allows it to open up for the uses permitted in a B-two district.
Which brings the question, would you have a problem with the Q and A for tractor trailer parking only?
I wish I could hear you, I'm trying.
He heard it.
So, I'll, I'll have to check with the purchasers on this property if that's, if they would be okay with that, just cuing it for tractor trailer parking only. From what we've talked about and their intentions, it is to park just tractor trailers over there, but as far as any future plans beyond that, we don't know, but that's the what, going forward, what their intentions are. So, if we could resume to that, I don't think they would have a problem with that. I'll make a phone call when we leave here, though, but I, I think that would be fine. That would be acceptable.
You make a phone call when?
I can make it right, I can make it in ten minutes. I can make it right now, if you'd like.
Okay, well, go ahead and make the call and then come back after we go through with some more.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, that'll be good. Okay, he's got it.
Sorry about, I can't hear.
No problem. I can't hear either, so, no biggie.
Item number three, rezoning presented by Patricia Thomas. Representing Patricia Thomas, it's a request, recommendation for approval to rezone one lot located on the northeast corner of Atlanta Highway and West Ferry Road from a O-two zoning district to a B-two zoning district. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Stone and the planning commission.
Ma'am, pull that microphone down. There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Stone and the planning commission, for this opportunity to come before you today to make this request for rezoning the property located at thirty-seven oh one Atlanta Highway. My name is Patricia Thomas. I reside at five-ten East Moy Drive, Montgomery, Alabama. My business address is one-twenty-eight Coliseum Boulevard. The name of the business is Patricia's Boutique. I am also an insurance broker, and the office is located in the same area, same building, one-twenty-eight Coliseum Boulevard. I'm requesting that the property at thirty-seven oh one Atlanta Highway be rezoned from zero oh one office to a B-two Class A zone. So, I plan on having retail sales there, moving the boutique from Coliseum Boulevard to Atlanta Highway. And we will also offer education seminars. I do sell Medicare insurance, so my niche is in the senior market. Once a month, I host a event called Chat and Chew. It's a community event where ladies and men come in, and we have Bible study sometime, and sometime we have community leaders to come in and just share on different topics. And that's my request today.
Do we have any questions from the planning commission?
Would you have a problem with restricting it to what you're asking for?
No, that's what I need it for. Now, one other thing, community events, that entails inviting seniors in, we do technology classes with them, teach them how to, you know, put the, use their phones to place apps on it so that they can contact their insurance company, and order medication, order groceries, and that's the only thing I didn't mention.
Okay.
Ma'am, what are the hours operation for your?
Tuesday through Friday from ten to five, ten to two on Saturdays, close on Sunday and Monday.
So, nothing late at night, or, nothing late at night after business hours?
We close at five.
Got you, I understand.
Do we have any questions?
Um, Ms. Thomas, so, to make sure I'm understanding, you'd be using this specifically for insurance, boutique, what else, did you say, something else?
Educational workshop.
Educational workshop, and health fairs as well, with all this, most of it, you know, during the day.
I know we're wanting, we're saying B-two A, but there's still some items in A that has been concerned, so can we still restrict it to those three uses?
To what she's requesting?
Uh-huh, can, okay. So, you'd be willing to press to restrict it to B-two specifically for insurance, boutique, and education?
Yeah.
And health fairs.
Yeah, okay, I'm, I'm.
That does include the educational workshop?
It does.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from anyone in the audience? Is there a motion?
I make a motion that it be rezoned and restricted to the B-two A specifically boutique, insurance use.
Educational?
Educational, correct, educational.
And health fairs.
And what's that?
Health fairs.
Health.
Health fairs.
Fairs.
Okay.
Health fairs.
Second.
All in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you for you, Thomas. Item number four is the development plan presented by Pilgrim and Bostic Engineering, representing Holy Spirit Catholic Church.
Good afternoon, my name is Taylor Manning with Pilgrim and Bostic. I'm here to answer any questions y'all have about the following development plan.
Any questions from the planning commission? Any questions from the audience? A public hearing has been held. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number five, presented by professional engineering consultants, representing, I'm going to mess this up, oh my goodness, Agbana Academy.
Hey, good afternoon, Taylor Watson with P E C, here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Yes, uh, which lot is that house on over there?
Which lot, what? They're going to put two houses on it, two fourteen-hundred square foot houses on it.
There's one little mini house on it now.
They're going to tear those down.
Is, is, is that sewer over there or separate business?
I think it's sewer. I'd have to check on that.
So, you're making one, one into two, you're requesting one lot into two lots?
Yes, sir, and they would both have the sixty, sixty-foot frontage on them. They just kind of be skewed, one in the front, kind of one on the side to the back.
You gonna build a duplex on this?
No duplex, no, two fourteen-hundred square foot houses.
What's your, what's your spacing? What, what do you, have you looked at what your spacing between them?
Um, it's, it's pretty good. Both houses meet all the setback requirements, so they have the side yard, the backyard, so they all, they all meet those requirements.
Any questions from the audience? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is the developmental plan presented by Flowers and White Engineering, representing Chris Stallworth.
Good evening, Brad Flowers, Flowers and White Engineering, on behalf of Chris Stallworth. As noted, Mr. Stallworth's doing roughly forty-eight hundred square foot building on this far eastern end of Decker Lane, single building and parking, really nothing special about this one, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Do you know what the building is going to be?
Uh, all I know right now is just straight office building, I don't know, I have no idea.
Do we have any questions from the audience? A public hearing has been held. Thank you. Yes, sir, representing Z-Tech Fairview.
Again, Brad Flowers, Flowers and White Engineering. On this development plan, the property is located southwest corner of Gaston Avenue and West Fairview. The property was previously built National Lennon Service. The developer is wishing to come in and do a convenience store with a side restaurant per se, so basically two units in the single building, canopy out front for fuel pumps and as well as in the back with fuel pumps in the rear. If you've got any questions about the site plan, I'm happy to answer those.
Pretty big gas station, right? Okay.
If you look at most of the gas stations, convenience stores going up nowadays, this is basically the, the model of what they're doing. It has more amenities inside of it, more features, food, and different options.
The location is already B-two, correct?
Correct. We don't have any issues with zoning, we're good.
Did you say pumps front and back?
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you look at the site plan, you'll see there's pumps around the rear as well as in the front.
Do we have any more questions from the planning commission? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? A public hearing has been held. Thank you, sir. Item number eight, presented by Larry and Speaks and Associates, representing Lucky LLC. Request final approval of holidaying in East Chase, plat number one A, located on the south side of East Chase Lane, approximately a thousand feet west of Berry Road. Yes, sir.
Uh, William Speaks with Speaks and Associates, representing Lucky LLC, the developer. The reason for the replat, the planned hotel going on the northernmost lot of, of the existing plat, we're needing to move that southern lot line to get enough area in that lot for parking, essentially.
parking, essentially.
Say that again, what about parking?
Based on the square footage of the building and the amount of parking that we require, we're not able to fit enough in the current footprint of that lot, so we're needing to shift that southern boundary a little bit and basically create more space on that lot.
Will the, will the driveway be coming from Berry Hill or East Chase Lane?
It'll be the little cut-through road that goes between Berry Hill and East Chase Lane. There's a little, little drive there.
And the parking is, and the parking is gonna be on the south of this design?
Uh, on the north side, sorry, north, north lot, but the south line of that lot is the one that we're moving.
What about that little pine on the front, on the, East Chase Lane?
Sorry, one more time?
That's not part of this, this lot, is it, that little pine shape, wedge shape?
No, sir, no, sir.
So where are you gonna have access to East Chase Lane?
So there's, there's already an access drive that was constructed a couple of years ago on this lot that does access East Chase Lane, and this new, the, the new drive for the hotel will come off that existing access drive.
So the hotel entirely in lot C one?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, what's on lot A one?
Sorry, one more.
Have y'all proposed anything for lot A one? Just out of curiosity?
No, no, they've, they've got ideas, they, they think they'll put a building there eventually, but nothing, nothing concrete.
Do we have any more questions from the Planning Commission? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Unanimous.
Number nine, presented by Larry Speaks and Associates, representing Lucky LLC again, public hearing for a development plan for a new building to be located at nineteen fifty-six East Chase Lane in a B two zoning district.
William Speaks with Speaks and Associates again, this is the development plan for that hotel. Can answer any questions y'all have on that one.
The area of the one lot is smaller on this one than it was on the previous one.
That would be probably lot A, A one, that's just south of this, of this lot that the hotel's going on. If that, that one did decrease in acreage since we moved that, that lot line for the, for the site that the hotel's going on.
Any more questions? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? A public hearing has been held. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Alright, we're gonna go back to number two. Presented by Charles and Pam Matthews. Yes, sir?
Okay, so I just spoke with the rep from Shoreline Management and he said that they're okay with it, as long as it goes industrial, they have no plans on building on it, the tractor trailers are just strictly gonna be parked there, they're not powered or anything like that, the trailers will be parked there, excuse me, and the tractors are parked off-site at their other location. The only thing that they ask is that potentially they might wanna put an office over there at some point in time to go, to coincide with their business that they have there. So as long as we are zoned industrial, it should be fine. They have no plans on putting service stations or anything along those lines there.
Mr. Reeves?
So it's gonna be zone, you, you requesting zone M one?
Yes, sir.
And they, that's okay for offices in M one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then, then if you're gonna cue it as you said?
As I said, from what, talking to him. Now, they might come back and request something later on down the line.
Yeah.
But they, they said that, you know, their, their plans currently is just to park tractor, the trailers over there, and they might put a building over there at some point in time to coincide with their business. Now, they're not putting building stations or anything of that nature over there, that's currently what their plans are with it, and they just don't want to have to, if they, when they, if and when they go to put a building over there, to have to go back through the process of this again to get rezoned, to remove a cue or to add a designation to it.
Were you gonna say something?
I was gonna make sure, your, your motion is to cue it?
Yes, as, as he indicated.
For a tractor trailer parking and storage and an office.
At some point in time.
Okay.
You understand what you're saying?
I understand, yes.
Okay.
If they want something different, they can come back.
Well, that, it'll be up to them to make the final decision on that, so.
So I make a motion that we cue it as we just indicated, that he's good with.
Paul, can you read that again, what the cue is?
Did you call me Paula?
Oh my gosh, Tonya, I'm so sorry. I said that out loud in here. I'm never gonna let this one...
The motion is to rezonate to an M one qualifying for tractor trailer parking and/or stores and an office.
I think I said Paul.
And that will include if they wanna put any sort of storage for materials or equipment over there too?
That's different.
Well, that's part of what they would be using it for potentially.
What kind of materials?
If they had to, I, I have no idea, I'm not in the, the business in knowing what they're doing per se besides parking tractor trailers over there, but if they had a storage building of some sort over there for just any sort of equipment they might need to hook up or unload a tractor trailer. Yeah, we don't know, but, we don't know that, it might be somewhere down the line that they have it at their current location, that they would just, they would bring it over there, but if they're building something over there, you know, they'll build an office building over there potentially, but they have no plans of doing that now, but they might in the future.
Right, office is part of the motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not storage.
Tractor, trailer, storage and parking in an office.
Okay.
Okay.
I second that.
No, you made the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
I second that motion.
Oh my gosh, I am. Can I make one more to save y'all?
Yes, go ahead.
Larry said don't tell it, but I am. I just got out of a meeting yesterday with a lawyer, my wife worked at Jackson's Hospital for fifty years and three months, and she doesn't have any retirement at Jackson's. Fifty years, three months, and she, of course, that's, and she's still working, she'd work for free down there, she loves it, but that was some rough news we had yesterday, and thank y'all for this good news, 'cause it, it was bad, and the worst thing about yesterday, when I left there, I went to McDonald's and I got a chocolate shake and it was sour. But thank y'all so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, 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 sir, thank you for, for, for...
Me?
No.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for delaying it last month to this month so we could clear everything up and, and get, and understanding of what is needed and what is required. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much, thank y'all so much.
Hey, I just wanna remind y'all, the next planning commission is the second Thursday of next month because of holidays, so it's gonna be on November thirteenth.